Can I get a little call please?
Mr. Leslie?
Here.
Mr. Felicity?
Here.
Mrs. Alleson?
Here.
Mr. Cora? Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Cranny?
Here.
Mr. Marano?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, recognition?
Don't tell me you have a recognition for this. Uh, just, just various aspects. I wanted to thank everybody for their time, um, hard work, budgeting. That's sort of the, uh, one of the hot topics on the agenda. Sealy, trying to balance out, Christina, Kim, everyone who has been involved in this process. I told all of these at the session how proud I was of everyone. Um, it's in the top string, but thanking for your time, your diligence, um, the entire business department, every administrator involved in budgeting. Has really rolled up their sleeves and, um, insisted with this budget. So hopefully we're, we're getting some headway and moving forward and then we'll see that shortly.
Thank you. Uh, this time I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the office who would like to make a comment. Please step up to the mic, just your name, address, and direct to your comments or your questions. Go on tonight. Thank you. Uh, this point I would like to let everybody know, we did have an executive discussion prior to this session and, uh, we discussed personnel matter. Our superintendent's report.
Um, again, basically just gave that movie aspect there. It was a summary. We have some individual things that were happening. I spoke to earlier. Um, and our later meeting in the month, graduation was great. Um, just any connection?
Thank you. Do we have solicitors report and yours report that I reported to them? Okay, I'd like to get a motion to approve our meeting minutes from May 8th and May 22nd, 2018. So this summary will be superintendent recommends and I so moved to approve the meeting minutes of May 18th, 2018, May 22nd, 2018. Mr. Cranny first, second, excuse me, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Informational agenda. Any update on the education foundation? What I would suggest with the education foundation as, uh, as we roll into our, uh, new communication, uh, piece for charging the obvious school district is that we find that a person who would be willing to work with the board, uh, with the education foundation. So I think it's really something we have to figure out who that person is going to be and get, get a seat on that board. So, uh, I would like to see us, uh, discuss that in the future session, okay? Uh, Mr. Kramer, pathfinder.
Uh, pathfinder ended up meeting last week. I sent a pretty lengthy email out to all board members. Um, still the largest topic on our agenda, but we do have graduation ceremonies. We look great. Um, we graduated six students, um, took our enrollment out to 72, but there's already five new kids committed or students committed for the hall. So for represent one of our current, um, enrollment. So that, that enrollment seems strong. Uh, latest thing on the agenda, um, as I sent out the emails, the roof replacement. We, um, we interviewed the architect, David McLean, who came in, uh, we have an estimate from Garland. The Garland company for $500,000 to $600,000 for the roof replacement. Um, we are now investigating whether, um, to use Garland's services, they can do the work as a construction manager or to hire an, uh, an architect to oversee the process and take it out to bit, uh, bit to different roofing systems rather than just Garland's system. So, uh, we decided to table the decision at Wednesday's meeting. I'll come back to our home districts, talk to our superintendents and, uh, finance directors and get advice, our facilities directors, and then meet back up and make that decision when we get to our next meeting.
Hopefully you go with your option.
What's that?
Hopefully you go with your option.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
Mr. Cranny? Thank you. Okay, Parkway, Mr. Ford's not here tonight. Does anybody, uh, he didn't report, report anyway, so they left tonight's meeting. Is any of those chats not?
Nothing heard.
And our finance committee report?
We did not find anything.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Um, consent agenda will consist of items 7.1 through 7.20. We will take individual votes on 718, 719, and 721. So we'll pull those out of consent and individual vote on those. So please review the consent agenda, 7.1, 7.20, and then, yeah, we'll call it. Those are action discussion items.
Wait, so again, we're gonna?
Yeah, we part those one. Yeah. Yeah, we move along. So we'll do 7, uh, 18, 19, 20 separately. And then we'll just roll 21, 22, 23, and 24 and reconsider. Okay?
Uh, do we pull out the, uh, the rules, the resources of that?
Uh, we can pull that out separately as well. What number is that?
Seven six.
Seven six. Any questions, comments, or arguments in session?
So if you have something to do, agree with that, tell us about the strategy with student teachers, what university you are partnering with, and what?
Um, generally, we have annual agreements with those secondary institutions, uh, for their student teachers. Uh, basically, our local colleges, um, who go through, so we will send it out as well. Um, those who seek student teachers and place them with us, we have to have agreements with. So sometimes it's based upon the location of where their, their students are. Perhaps they have a, a student that's a resident somewhere close to this area, so they try to place them within a close distance to them, makes sense. So that's why sometimes we get a college that we may not typically, oh, that's a different one. And that would be the reason that we have to obviously have a agreement with them for us to have, house their student teachers.
So this agreement is an all of opinion. So how can you agree this with them?
Um, that, I don't know, the top I have.
You need to know our six. Global industries.
I can count.
I mean, I can go back.
Bethany, Hikey, Slippery Rock, University of Pittsburgh.
U. D. Castle.
Shadow, Dean.
Yep.
Um, Chad, what? About horse.
They probably wouldn't be able to.
Oh, no, not our teachers.
Yeah, it's CCAC.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Can we speak to, uh, a little bit about, uh, time talking? And I mean, the business office did, uh, the diligence on the, uh, copiers and that agreement. So could you speak to that, of course, how that process went, if the district ended up benefiting from that process and how that would proceed?
Um, yes, thank you very much. Um, Scott and I developed an R and D process for the copiers, distributed to a number of vendors, received proposals on June 15th, um, on copiers. And, um, we received some very, very attractive, uh, proposals from three vendors. They included PomDoc, who is our current vendor, the Wilson Group, and Core Business. Um, currently, under the current PomDoc agreement, without any overage expenses, our lease agreement is $1,313.50 per month. Under the new proposal, based upon PomDoc's, um, proposal, it's $10,787 a month. That's a savings of over $1,500 a month. Um, the Wilson Group submitted their proposal of $10,717 a month, and Core Business was at $12,928 a month. Our proposal, it's a board, is to approve PomDoc, and there are additional reasons for that. Um, some of the distinguishing reasons are that PomDoc will allow up to five larger volume, um, multi-function printers to be installed in the district, that are installed in the district, remain in the district without any additional expense. Um, and we'll relocate those devices to where it's more hot, hot and needed, and Mr. Pelley can talk about that. Um, we also, PomDoc is going to be replacing 22 of our, um, multi-function printers with these newer Xerox, uh, desktop units. Um, again, we'll be a complete Xerox shop as we are today, as opposed to the Wilson Group, who is proposing, um, Sharps and Brothers. So we would have two different types of printers with the Wilson Group as opposed to having all Xerox, and we think that's a real key benefit. Um, we also looked at the, uh, overage, the, the overage, um, differences. And the overage cost on PomDoc for power is .039 cents per copy. The Wilson Group was proposing two different price levels, whether it's an overage on the Sharp or an overage on the Brothers. The Brothers, um, copiers would be areas where we, we would expect to have a higher po- volume. So I looked at going back a year to see where were the months that we had over 20,800 copies per month, and more two months last year. Um, that break even between the two proposals, Wilson and PomDoc, is about 1,697 additional copies. And all of a sudden, we would be exactly that break even point. So in those two months previously, it's last year, we did have that situation. Um, so for those reasons, we are here to recommend that we enter into a full service lease with PomDoc. Um, thank Mr. Pelley to talk about the printer management side. Um, we did have two RFPs. We sent one out for basically our copiers and one for our print services. So, Mr. Pelley?
Sure. So throughout the district, we have somewhere about 80-ish HP ice creams. How else do we do this? You know, maybe, oh, the 40 additional units that we asked to replace part of that inventory, half that inventory, are your desktop multi-functioners. Scams, hotware, fax, all of them, we're really mindful. Every time a piece of paper comes out, it costs us money. And there's a structural, oh, isn't that, but it costs money. My intention is if we have multi-function devices, more stuff's gonna be going into it. Data that we can curate and use as instructional resources. So, uh, it adds functionality in these devices. We'll, uh, have direct connections who are Google users, all the people who develop, it's a good idea. Uh, and have them use the drive functionality, use that storage. Here features that, uh, these devices, you walk up to it, put a piece of paper in, scan right to your, to your Google Drive. Uh, so much better use of devices than just traditional laser printers. So, and in our intention, that, uh, seeing mentioned, that we have two, uh, PIS that actually went out. One to maintain the multi-function piece of equipment at our copiers. Uh, because we replaced half of that copier inventory with these desktop units, we have more functionality. Then you have like 40 other laser printers sitting around. So why pay someone to make this on? When we have the inventory of 40 units? And, uh, we're just, if something worked in, we're placed where it exists. Yeah, actually, I could look. Our current laser printers that we have, some are really big. I've been there 18 years. Some I bought for Sierra's years. So, uh, the piece of equipment is replaced, you line us up online, I'll have to do it on a box. So it really doesn't move us to pay or want to be to support our laser printers, to be honest. We'll supply it on there somewhere, and we'll be all.
And us, by us doing that, if you look at the current situation with PomDoc, uh, we were being charged $1,700 just to maintain all these laser printers. So that's a direct savings right there. I wouldn't give you a lot of help.
Uh, I appreciate the report and I appreciate the board's, uh, willingness to take it out to bit because I think it really did benefit us by doing that. So, great job group, going out, doing the diligence, and excited that we benefit as a district.
So I do have two, two follow-up questions related to copiers. So what, you know, technology changes really fast. So, uh, two, two questions. Um, 60 months. Talk to us, talk to us about 60 months, five years, which is like a long time.
Well, I can ask you to the financing board, I mean, uh, seeing it talk about the benefits that might eventually fall through financing terms.
So we were to ask, so, yeah.
I said financially, obviously, we thought five years because when you think about the useful life, we were estimating the useful life of the existing technology and that's where we had to ask, we had to talk to Scott about the actual technology changes. Our view is that in the past, we've had five-year terms on our copiers, um, and that seemed to be fine for us. And, and moving copiers or changing copiers frequently is a cost to us because obviously we have to therefore get all of the, um, users all of the new information because every time you change it out, it does take time for everyone to get trained on the new devices. Our view is that our experience of being five years seemed to be acceptable to us. Uh, we're getting new technology, we're getting enhancements with these new products, and therefore the view is five years works well. As well as from a financial viewpoint, looking at a five-year term, obviously spreads out that large cost over a longer period of time and therefore lowers that cost as opposed to a shorter period of time. Because if you think about the lessor, he's going out and purchasing this equipment on our behalf. Um, and therefore their, their return, they're looking at their return on investment, whether it's a longer term or shorter term. We do it a longer term, um, it gives them a longer period of time in order to recruit that investment plus the profit margin.
So I get the math. Um, it just feels like we're taking on that, it feels like, it, it feels like we're taking on that liability in a way, right? Their, their, um, I mean, that's their cost of doing business, so why are they passing that?
Oh, we're getting locked in.
Are we?
And we're getting locked in for five years.
Yeah. And are you, are you saying that's a good thing or a bad thing there?
I would say it's a bad thing, you know, I'm waiting to talk about 710, Google lease of laptops for five years when technology changes so rapidly. A teacher's laptop of five years, you'd be lucky if it worked in five years.
So there's currently voices that have, and they're kind of right now, especially their seventh year in the business.
And you're lucky.
Well, that's, that's why I asked if it's.
So before we go to 710, because I had a, I had two questions. Um, so I guess, you know, can we go back and say what would, what would this be at three years versus five years? Five years just seems like an eternity.
It is.
We could, and one of the things I was going to suggest, we do have a member of the audience who is with PomDoc, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering if you had questions about the technology side, whether or not you want the president who is, are you the president?
This way.
So that's, that's one question that I, I, you know, I don't, I, I don't have questions about the technology, just more, how are we protecting ourselves against the, the change in technology, which is leading to the second question, which is, do we have, what's the provision in the contract for, as technology evolves over this course of five years, can we repurpose the dollars, can we repurpose? Can we trade up? Can we get better technology? I just, things change, so what are the provisions?
We have that's how laying language about, uh, whether it's a device we feel is not, this defective, not defective, sorry, not. If it has a, a breakdown cycle that we deem not appropriate, then, then we have to replace that.
So that's defective, I'm talking about, uh, new technology.
So historically, I've not been involved in multi-functionized, uh, RFPs. It was usually almost, historically, most of the district's business manager or most managers did that. So when we took this RFP on, uh, the devices we have now, generally block up, we all have ID badges in our, or ID badges in the scan and it synchronizes with our active directory, my, my, after I can't think of any, H2R. It does, uh, cost accounting, it's not only copy schematics, uh, we can cost that all out. We can scan to our user directories. So these new devices, what do we gain? One of my primary things with the RFP, the energy books together, universal user interface, who's watching these newer, uh, these devices, these multi-function devices, whether it be a big 75-page permitted device or a little 30-page permitted device, it's the same interface across. Costs being her, my training staff, or hierarchical people, it's hard to measure, but it's significant. Uh, it takes a lot, we will, uh, PomDoc's coming out with trainers, we're gonna have to train 260 teachers.
But you also have an employee just for?
That's right, we have a person at Copy Center, uh, who was, by the way, which relative mill, she's a paper, we printed earlier. 75% of that is for daily practice. That, that young lady, her 75% is for ongoing practice.
And how much do we pay for an online learning management software called Schoology? It's supposed to decrease copying?
That's right, that's a huge issue that you should, it should be conversation about.
So those are all things that, that we can discuss, but I think what Mrs. Murphy was asking, if I think I'm wrong, was when this equipment, if it so becomes antiquated prior to this contract, eliminated in five years, how can be refreshed accordingly?
Yeah, and, and I'll just share, you know, I, I know we're doing this at, at my work right now, and it's one of these things where we're saying, you don't know where technology's gonna be even in 18 months. So can we, will there, is there an opportunity for us to repurpose the dollars with PomDoc, for example? Is there, you know?
In the contract, is there an opportunity for us to do that? Can we open it up if that happens?
Yeah, I think we should be smart about, about the timeframe and about switching up the technology. So I guess I would ask teams, if there's, if there's, um, support from the board to do this, just to, those expires August, you know, couple months?
August 31st, right, is when the expiration of the current device, or the current lease. Um, so if the next board meeting would not occur until early August, we wanted to have the equipment installed before the teachers came back to school. So that's why we felt getting it approved now. I wanted to also add, the reason we were, part of the reason we were looking at five years, in my previous school district that I was with, I think I was involved in three, two, at least two copier renewals, and we did the RFPs and we went out for five years. And both of those times, um, for both of those terms, we were quite satisfied with the fact that we felt that the technology on the copiers and the faxing, et cetera, in, in and out, were sufficient for our needs during that period of time. So my perspective from a finance world was that I didn't think there was too much risk given this type of equipment. Um, I think if you were to ask us maybe about something else, I believe Scott may have a different answer. Um, so that was my perspective. Um, I think from a contract perspective, we have to review the contract, we can add language in there with regards to refreshing. Um, I'm not sure whether or not PomDoc will have a monetary reaction to that, we'll have to talk through that with them.
This is a big contract.
Yes, it is.
It's a huge contract and really big to me.
Yeah.
So we should have some.
So do I hear that, would you want to see, would you want to see the language prior to any approval?
I think we should probably both, um, just take it back in executive session, because I don't know.
There's the terms of the essence, because this ends in August. So I don't know if you have any, I don't know if I can spot, I don't know, gentlemen, but, um, if there's, you know, any information that you can add regarding, you know, the quality within five years, how that typically works.
I would, I would say that, um, I would not be worried about a five-year contract, I'd say 90, probably 95, 98% of all, um, education, um, contracts that we, uh, had in place are at least five years. Typically, when we see those shorter terms, 36 or 48, this is more where the technology, threat organization is going to constantly change. Um, I think the platform that Xerox is on right now is open enough that apps can be written to fit anything that would kind of change in the education market. Like, um, we're getting Xerox's latest and greatest, uh, technology that was just introduced only like 18 months ago. So in my opinion, I would think the really is a risk for, uh, technology, say at point, um, with five years.
You know, how do we, how do we protect ourselves against that risk? How do you?
Consider this.
Well, I think what you're saying is if it drastically changes. Are you just saying if it drastically changes three years from now, can we run it up and?
Or, yeah, but what's the parameter for us to get better technology, as technology changes, I mean, can we know that into the contract?
I think that's always something that we negotiate, but that's not.
We have already customers, you know, prior to the end term, all the time, to include school districts. So if there's a major change in technology here for our equipment, um, I mean, I can't even think of the situation we're getting with, um, satisfied to be in front of the technology standpoint. But, uh, I mean, we do that all the time.
I'm actually less concerned about the technology change, part of the level of service we'll need, obviously, because I know my, my kids are in the district. We get a lot of, a lot less paperwork today than we did five years ago. Uh, and I perceive that we're using Google Drive, Google Docs, that type of thing, more and more and more, it's not gonna lessen. The level of service we're contracting here, and I don't know what the price tiers are, the level of service we're contracting here, five years from now, it may be way more than one.
Right, yeah, that's.
I don't know, maybe less than one.
Right. So can we repurpose the dollars? Yeah.
From a service standpoint, the district is protected in, in our lease, uh, you know, our accountability guarantee that if a machine has certain, um, instances, we really can fix the device. Um, and if it, if it knows that device can be removed from the lease, that's why.
No, I think what Brian said is that, as the demand goes down.
You know, there's, our, our, the RFP, the books together, there's time, we will need them to go over all your quotas. And based on all your quota, are, uh, history and previous, or secrets?
And that could be, that could be, that could be, that could be, uh, so you can base lock-in off. There's a lot of flexibility that there is on there.
And I think also from a budgetary, uh, budgetary standpoint, with any lease, the shorter the length, the more expensive it's gonna be. I mean, from a fiscal, uh, viewpoint, from the provider and the district, we could look at a short lease, but it's gonna cost you more money.
Yeah, because I'm just looking at the side, I was like, comparison, if the last 16-month lease and this 16-month lease is $100,000 less. So, yeah, that's, there's that, why would we, why would we do that?
This is probably a negotiation.
That's right.
Thank you for all the input, input and, uh, of you as well. I also would like to have Scott, while you're, while you're tall, uh, talk about the protocols and where we're going as a district with our technology that we provide our students.
Well, it's, kind of touches on the copiers as well, you guys know this. When's the last time you ever seen you sold into the CD drive, your laptop, small software, or, you don't sell that anymore. Because everything's a service, everything's great, it's cloud-based, uh, and that's what Google promotes on. It's much less global platform, global resource. It's much less global platform, global resources. And it's organized, because these are what our students do. They research there, they create stuff on Google ecosystem, either Google Sheets, uh, slide presentations, uh, docs, whatever, they utilize classroom collaboration. And they're vastly more cost-effective. We paid two hundred and some dollars, less than two hundred dollars for a Chromebook or a comparable, uh, there's a standard band five hundred. So, yeah, more than double the price, you know, uh, Chrome, Chromebook world, and if you wanna own it as well. So there's things that will be more and worse as a service, you know, top end devices.
And then from a instructional standpoint, Jen, can we talk about what grade levels we introduced to, at what point for the devices? And what did you talk to them?
Certainly. Actually, Mr. Collier and I just had a conversation similar to that today. So right now, sixth through twelfth, um, we are purple, um, heavy in that capacity. I think that the upper class in the eleventh and twelfth grade are still on Windows-based machines. And, um, had what that we face throughout. Uh, I was speaking about our elementary buildings and what types of technology they have. And as of right now, it's a hybrid. We have iOS systems, our tablets, our iPads, um, in the primary and a handful of those and various capacities in the intermediate as well. And in the intermediate school, we see the laptops, the traditional ones, and also the Chromebooks. The conversation was, there's a time and place for multiple things, but how can we best streamline to maximize the instructional practices with our technologies and how is that going to work? And our Chromebook is a device of selection, making sure that our teachers and our curriculum instructs and, and, you know, leads to that as well. So, uh, that's sort of our, our superficial technology to face at this time for our students.
Any other questions regarding, oh, I would like to also touch on the bus lease arrangement. Can you discuss that as well?
Um, yes, we, you know, we received approval, or we're doing for, um, at least. And we're now in the process of reviewing the lease document. And we've been that close, um, the buses were scheduled to arrive, uh, towards the end of July, early, uh, August, that they begin in time for, um, beginning of school. Um, so I know we're working with, um, our solicitor on new documentation and, uh, we hope they close in soon.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the opening hours on the sentence? And for public record, uh, seven point one seven approval, approve the BrainCon Part One, uh, change orders sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine. And that's a report that the district makes back to the state of Pennsylvania for our reimbursement program for our construction project. So we will, as a project, if there are change orders that have cost, that simply goes out, we get reimbursed a portion of that percentage of that money. I'd like to get a motion then to approve, don't you have to help me there? Seven point one through seven point five, excluding seven point six, and then picking back up of seven point seven through seven point one seven, and then picking back up again at seven twenty-one through seven twenty-two. That sounds good.
Yes, stated in another way, we could be seven point one through seven point two four, exclusive of seven point one eight, seven point one nine, seven point two five, and seven point six.
Thank you. Let's let you know when we're back.
So Luke.
Mr. Kramer first.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearney second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Mr. Marianna? Darren, you said, you said a general no.
Yeah, I just, there, there's many questions. I definitely, you know, believe teachers should be, uh, saddled with a computer that's five years old, uh, in today's technology market. You should be forward thinking and given that iPads and laptops change so much, uh, you're locked in for five years. And there's this question about, uh, five-year lease, uh, versus a three-year lease with, uh, copying. It's, there's too many questions.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so then we're gonna pick back up at, uh, Human Resources Report seven point six. Um, is that more, is there more under than just one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have four ten minutes left if we have any.
You have any?
Okay.
You want?
Yeah, resignation.
So we have to approve resignations? We have employment, uh, director of communication strategic partnerships, and then supplemental.
On any recommendations on how we should break this out? Um, I, why don't you start with your first group, I think, is resignation, if there's one. So you could ask for a motion to approve the resignation as, as the one, uh, in seven point six. So I would, uh, as part of the Human Resources Report, I would like to get a motion to approve the resignation of Luann Kiefner, uh, middle school cafeteria personnel, effective six nineteen eighteen. I get a motion to approve that. Mrs. Lesnick, second, Mrs. Murphy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So.
She passed at zero.
I think we're wrong in that. Yep, so we are also going to ask for a motion to approve Michaela Duckstun as our new director of communications and strategic partnerships, effective July first, twenty eighteen, as per contract negotiated by the superintendent. I need a motion to approve that.
Seven.
Mr. Kramer first, Mrs. Lesnick second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So I think we're two separate. I'll see if we can do those one at a time. Okay. Uh, supplemental would be the middle school, or Leanne McLean is our middle school yearbook sponsor for the school year eighteen nineteen, as per CBFT CBA. I get a motion to approve Leanne McLean. Mr. Kramer, second, second by Mr. Kuzinski, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So our next one is to, uh, hire, uh, Tim McConnell as our head girls varsity basketball coach, effective immediately as per the CBFT CBA. Do you even want to, do you want to do a roll call or just?
No, do we just proceed as if to listen from the board's comments?
No. That could, that could fall.
We get a motion to, I get a motion to approve Tim McConnell as the head girls varsity basketball coach immediately, as per CBFT CBA. So, Mr. Kuzinski, second by Mr. Kearney, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Let's, why don't we do a roll call because I could last round of, I know we wasted a lot of time, so. Just a quick.
Ms. Azrani?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesnick? Yes. Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Marianna?
No.
Mrs. Murphy?
So the motion.
Wait, 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 you forgot.
We forgot to.
Wait, Brian, where are you?
I'm here.
You're messing up.
He's not on the roll call. Sorry. I had you here. All right, Mr. Koppack.
So, so I have directly motion passed five-three with, uh, Darren, Julie, and Brian voting, uh, in the other five in the society, yes. So.
That's all. All righty. We have a retirement.
That's all we love.
That'd be cool to pass on that. I need a motion to approve Paula Smith, uh, Transportation Department, June eighth, twenty eighteen, officially. Mr. Kramer first, Mr. Kearney second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you deliver a piece?
Thank you very much.
On to item number seven one eight. Been, uh, much discussion over the last five, six months regarding our, our budget. Uh, I want to thank the business office and, and our administration for the time, energy, and effort it takes to balance the school budget under the current economic conditions of our state. Uh, so with that said, I will read the motion and we will, uh, can do a roll call, I believe, not the.
Yeah, we should do a roll call.
Yep. So let me take the train first. The superintendent recommends it, and I so moved to adopt the, and prove the general fund budget for the Church of Valley School District to the amount of sixty-five million, three hundred nineteen thousand thirty-one for the fiscal year beginning first day of July, twenty eighteen, with the necessary revenue for the same period of the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty eighteen, provided by earned income, occupation privilege, also earned, earned income tax resolution, D transfer tax resolution, a realty transfer tax resolution, and an occupation privilege tax resolution adopted May twenty-fifth, two thousand four, and a realty tax, uh, transfer tax resolution dated January ninth, two thousand seven. And by a school tax on the real estate which is hereby levied and assessed at a rate of one seven point zero seven one zero mils, or at a rate of a dollar seventy-one on each one hundred dollars of assessed consideration of tax, taxable profit. And to adopt and approve the Church of Valley School District budget resolution dated June twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. All taxpayers required to pay tax on real estate imposed by the school district shall be entitled to a two percent discount within two months after the date of the tax notice. Shall be charged a penalty of ten percent if more than four months from the date of notice. And all the liquid real estate taxes shall be charged ten percent interest unless taxpayers elect to pay such taxes in installments. The board secretary is hereby directed to append a copy of the budget to the minutes and to give notice to the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Act five-one-one taxes required by law. The budget is attached to our agenda. I get a motion to read that.
Does our recommendation from the finance committee, does our official recommendation? Yes. Yeah, finance committee.
Yep. So we have a, we get a motion by Mr. Kearney, second by Mrs. Lesnick, and we want to do a roll call, please.
Ms. Azrani?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesnick?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Marianna?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one, seven to one. Mr. Marianna, would you like to comment on why you proposed or?
Uh, I just think that, uh, the district can do a better job, uh, in watching its finances and, uh, building its buildings. I think, uh, a few years ago, when the district decided to build buildings, uh, instead of investing in their teachers, they made a big mistake and now we're feeling it. Uh, and I think every taxpayer in the district certainly doesn't want their taxes to go off. Uh, but we're feeling the repercussions of bad decisions made in the past.
When you say invest in the teacher, what do you mean by that?
We've got rid of teachers, uh, every year.
Through attrition.
Yeah, through attrition. You've never, you haven't hired new teachers in positions. And, and I'm not talking about five or ten, we're talking about fifty plus. Uh, hey, you know, the biggest, I would say the biggest effect a child has is the teacher in the classroom. When you raise class size, research shows, learning goes down. We struggle with keeping class size, uh, at a minimum amount. Uh, I think by getting rid of teachers through attrition, uh, was an easy way to balance the budget. Uh, but now, uh, it's just not the right way to deal with this. Uh, and given all the mandates from the state and everything, I realize budgets, uh, are tight. But certainly we have to look all around, uh, of how to balance a budget, and I just don't approve of this budget.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. All right, move on to seven point one nine. This is a motion that the superintendent recommends, an ISO move, to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen capital reserve budget in the amount of up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars contingent on certain twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen capital expenditures that may be bid and approved at later dates. And this budget was provided by the business office and was laid out with those capital reserves going to be used.
Are you going to present the documents? I don't know if the board would like me to put the slides up on the.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. Everybody saw it on their, on their board. I am, get a motion. Someone, Mr. Kuzinski first, second by Mr. Kopeck, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Marianna, would you like to comment on that?
No, just the same.
Okay, thank you. Seven point two zero, approve the Homestead-Farnstead Resolution. The superintendent recommends an ISO move to include the attached twenty eighteen, twenty-nine Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution authorizing Act fifty and Act one Homestead and Farmstead exclusion for real estate tax deductions for the school year beginning July first, twenty eighteen. Can I get a motion? Mrs. Lesnick first, Mr. Kearney second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So. Any comment on that one?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are down to, that was it. That was it. Fantastic. Uh, again, at this point in time, I would like to get, uh, anybody from the public who would like to make a comment, please step up and name one of us. There is no one I would like to take, uh, an opportunity to congratulate, Mr. Koppack. We welcome your, uh, move from the boys to the girls. We, we really, uh, look forward to seeing, uh, this girls' program and your leadership prosper. Um, it's gonna be a huge, a huge change for you, Tim. Um, if you'd like to say anything about what McLean will do or, or, or what your thoughts are on the whole thing, we'd love to hear it from you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for approving me to be a girls' coach. I've been the boys' coach for twenty-five years and I'm involved in the boys' basketball program, and I think it's time for a change. And the opportunity with the girls' job being open, I thought it would be an opportunity, opportunity for me to take a new step in a new direction and help, you know, helping these young ladies get the way they need to get. We have some talent coming up. I think it's gonna take a special person to bring them together. We have some, you know, some vision on players, you know, looking forward to work. Our program, if we build on what we're, will be successful. If we won't talk about wins and losses, I don't think you can judge success by wins and losses. I think we're gonna talk about effort and how hard we work. And I think if we like to work hard every night in practice and in the games, we'll be successful. And that's what we'll talk to the girls about. And we're gonna try to win in a manner that represents the school just well, and then you can be proud. So thank you for having me as your girls' basketball coach.
Thanks, Tim, thank you. I would also like to take this opportunity to welcome the newest member of our team, Emily Eckman, to the, to the table. So Emily, welcome. Um, we're excited to have you on Business Office Series, uh, looking for a great leadership in that department. As we can. Yes.
I don't think there's any comments.
Absolutely.
This will be my last board meeting.
What?
This is my last board meeting.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I didn't read that fine print.
But I want to thank the board, first of all, for the opportunity. It's been ten months, um, so.
It's been fun.
It is. Um, so I want to. So I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to join the group. Um, and obviously I want to thank the administration, um, for working with me. Again, every school district is a little bit different, and Scott, I know, I was in his office many, many days, many, many times. So I just want to thank, it's been a pleasure. And my goal for this district was to deliver a budget where everyone knew what was included in each of the line items. And I think we've been successful in doing that. And I know with Emily's guidance and leadership, um, I think this, we will be in a great position going forward. So once again, thank you, and, you know, I look forward to, if there are any questions, I'm just a phone call away, an email away. And we're working on a transition plan, and I'm working with Dr. Jo, uh, Dr. Jo Hana. In terms of how we can transition this, and it will be dependent upon what MNCs are as well. So, but I don't think I'll be here, so.
Emily, I didn't, I didn't realize that, but I would have mentioned it, but thank you for your service. You've been a part of this district.
Yes, thank you very much.
And we will not be meeting in July, so, which is why, so we'll see what we can do.
I would like to, you want to congratulate, uh, Michaela? She's, she left, so.
Yeah, she, she.
Oh, she left.
Yeah, she left. But we did, uh, also, uh, tonight's executive session, uh, bring in a new communications director, uh, Michaela Duckstein, and we were both excited about Michaela being on board. It's one of the areas that I think our district is, is, uh, greatly, uh, just, have a communication amongst ourselves, amongst our district, amongst our parents, amongst our students. So we're excited to, to hand that torch to, uh, Michaela, get her started. So she will be joining us, uh, audio first, correct? Thank you. Can I get a motion to, to adjourn?
Someone.
Mr. Kearney first.
I'll beat you to it, Kramer.
All in favor?
I'll beat you to it, Kramer.
Opposed? We are.